Let's have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Okay.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that's on tape.
Yes. I would like to call a quarter this meeting at the county commission for April 1st, 2020. First of all, before we begin, I wish a happy birthday to Sean Secora, our proud commissioner.
Hey.
And then we'll proceed from there with consent and approval. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Spend with me for a minute. We have four exonerations for $1,001.50 vouchers, general county fund, 124-724-42911, 553-60, Chestnut Ridge Park, 819-59, Mason Dixon Park, 321-74, assessors valuation, 306-23, teen court, 12,762-24, purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, $35,111.13, magistrate court, 2986-911-15745, home confinement, 6,615-2, Chestnut Ridge Park, 166-68, assessors valuation, 377-91 for a voucher total of 181, 946-37. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Westron Board of Zoning Appeals, Montague County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Monthly Advisory Board, Banned and Deliberated Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region 6 Planning and Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, Mountaineer Trail Network Authority, and we have fiduciary orders for April 1st, 2020. And then I have some other items.
Move for approval?
Second.
And properly moved to second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
And what do we have?
First of all, we have an objection to a settlement in the John Peter Foster III estate. The, this was, I, I'm a little unclear on whether this was scheduled for administrative closing or not. That was supposed to happen today. We postponed that to June 3rd. But they, they have filed an objection, so I just want to note that for the record.
Okay.
Do we know that?
Then we also have, like this is a statement of services for George Armistead for the Everett-Laverne-St. Clair estate. Another one for the Norma Rosalie Newbauer estate from George Armistead, and also the Bernice Claire Rice Sowers estate. And then also a statement of services for the John Peter Foster III estate that was also sent by George Armistead.
Okay. Move for approval?
Second.
And properly moved to second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any introductions of the members? I don't see any in the office, but we have offices. Seeing none, we will now open for comments from the public. Seeing none, we will close comments from the public. Thank you. Colleen, do we have grants?
I have a request for reimbursement for the JJDPC grant, the DMC portion in the amount of $3,020.06.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved to second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondence?
I just have one item. The Mountain Line Transit Authority has sent their audit for fiscal year 1819 to be put on file here in the commission office. That's all.
Any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Seeing none, we'll move on to new business, first item A, to consider for adoption resolutions regarding the 2020 census and fair housing month.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Been properly moved and second for adoption, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Second is to consider financial support to go with 19 food insecurity efforts. If we would at first go ahead and phone in?
Yeah, that's the number. Could you call this number on?
Sarah Bishop.
Yeah, she can't make it.
I didn't realize we were putting her on the phone.
Yes.
Yeah, well, she called to say that she wasn't that.
Last, last evening, she contacted me and said she was unable to come in, so we have that number to contact her first. With regard to this, when we next discuss, Commissioner Bloom will recuse himself from any discussion regarding the Pantry Plus, but this is a different item. This is right now Meals on Wheels that we're dialing in to speak to their executive director, their manager. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good. Good morning, Sarah. Keep in mind, this is meeting, so you are being taped and recorded. So if you would identify yourself, please?
Yes, my name's Sarah Bishop, and I'm the manager for the Morgantown area Meals on Wheels.
Okay, we have all the information, and I believe it's had enough time to be able to review it. Is there anything particular that you want to add other than what was given? And we'll, we'll state it here in a minute.
I don't guess so, at least not right now.
Okay. It appears that the item of need would be funding for shelf-stable and frozen meals in the amount of $5,453.27. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Do, any commissioners have any questions of Sarah at this time?
In, in what period does this cover?
Right, that's.
I think it's a month, isn't it?
Yes, this should cover a month of meals for our clients.
Which month, though? Is this?
The month coming up, yeah.
The month of April?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if, if we suddenly are unable to deliver meals, then we would use these to cover the time period, whereas COVID-19's at a peak.
Okay, all right.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, we have another?
Yeah.
Phone call to phone in, please?
I know, do you want me to hang up, or you?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Hang that one.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Seismier's here. Oh, it's, oh, Ron Lidle.
Yes, yes, this is another phone in, please.
Oh, okay, so let's do Ron first, yeah, because that would be work real well.
We're phoning in to the Montague County President Board of Education, Ron Lidle.
Hello.
Hello, Ron.
Hello?
We, good day, Ron, can you hear us?
I can't hear you.
You've got to talk louder.
Okay, I'll talk louder. Can you hear me now?
Okay, got you, absolutely.
Okay, sorry.
That works.
Usually I'm accused of speaking much too loudly here, all right?
Yeah.
Please identify yourself. You are in front of commission. You are being taped and recorded for the minutes.
My name's Ron Lidle, and what else did you, that's?
That's good.
That's good. I've already introduced your title, okay?
Let me, let me just say something on Ron's behalf. I, I just caught him cold and said we're calling him. So Ronnie is obviously the board of education president, but he's also been spearheading the effort to, outside of his official position, to help feed the kids, so that's why we're talking, talking to him.
So what do you have to present to us?
Say that again?
What do you have to present to us of need?
Yeah, we have, I've, I've been talking to Justin Byers, who's really spearheading, and he's here this morning with us feeding this. I'm kind of the part of the spear pushing the backup. Justin is working directly with Christine Wong and, and Brian from our food service at the schools. And what we've run into a little bit of a challenge with buying food through the school system, and it's somewhat of an ethical issue, I guess, to feed families. So at this point, we're going out and trying to figure out and work with different organizations in, through the USDA and the State Department of Agriculture to prepare boxes, family boxes, for people in need in Mon County. And the USDA has asked us, you know, please, you know, take some food, take some food. And we're trying to figure out the best way to do that. What I'm coming to the commission for is what I, what I've talked to and have requested this call for, I guess, is because we need funding to do the, the distribute, or to pay the packaging and handling fee at the state level. And we're not, we're not, you know, the food comes for free from the USDA to the state, transferred through the West Virginia Department of Agriculture, out to the schools or out to different food pantries. And at this point, we're trying to, I'm working with the State Department of Agriculture to set up or to partner with a, a local food pantry, and our Scotch Run was our first thought, but they're shut down at this point. And we're trying to figure out how to get an organization that can actually place the order, because you have to have the, the food pantry or a school system to place orders. But as I said before, I don't know what about the explanation when we go back, why we use taxpayers' money to, from the school, the school designated taxpayers' money to feed families within Mon County. So that's what we're coming, I'm coming today for, and it's looking like next week, we're going to try to do 1,000 food boxes, is what I understand from Justin. And we're working on finishing that. I think Christine is working on finishing up that order so we can get that placed. So that's what, that's what we're here for. That's what, that's, that was what my request was. As far as volume of that request, 1,000 people, if we did, if there was, it's $2.75, I believe, per, per my conversations, per carton of food. And I'm thinking a carton of food, you know, a 40-pound box of meat or something like that. So I'm not really sure how to break that down, and we're still working through that. But if, I was thinking if, if there was 1,000 families, and each ended up with a carton, would be $2,750, we'd have to pay the state. And just to be safe, if we did one and a half times that, in case I'm off on my calculation on what the food away, because we haven't had time to make that calculation, it would be, I think it was $4,100 or something that we would need, and that's what we're reaching out to the county commission to see if that's a possible, possibility for you guys to fund that for us and for the, for the people in Mon County.
Okay, so the request is in the amount of 4,100. This, Mr. Seismier, Rourke is here, just so you know, he'll be coming up next, okay?
Okay, yeah, I was going to say the other, the, his, his mom, Ms. Wong is actually his mother. So she, they, he should have conversation directly with her. And they should better verify this, the amounts and stuff, which I've talked to Justin, who they're working directly with.
If you, if you don't mind coming forward, Rourke, okay? Identify yourself, please.
My name's Rourke Seismore, and I serve as the president of the board at Pantry Plus More.
Thank you.
And so I have a tiny bit more information maybe relating to that, the USDA piece. So kind of what our, what our holdup piece with that is, is that, so they can sell food to the schools to use. But when like a third party, like Justin at Bartini, or like the Pantry Plus More is doing it, there becomes kind of a problem with the USDA getting it to the school to then distribute to a third party. So we're trying to figure that out and figure out a way to work around that, in a way. So we're a food bank agency, so we take some USDA stuff normally, but it's not the same set of USDA stuff. So that's kind of where the problem's happening right now, and, and we've got an ask out to the USDA rep to kind of help us work around that. But right now, we're, we're unsure if we're going to be able to get all of that stuff, or in what quantities, or anything like that. And that's kind of to the broader point. I think right now, a lot of food groups are struggling to get the same prices that they normally get, right? So when you're ordering from the Mountaineer Food Bank, when you're ordering from these bulk wholesale distributors, you can get like a much lower price, right? So our program's doing a delivery program on Mondays and Thursdays. And, and they, the boxes we're making are nine meals, so it's three breakfast, three lunch, three dinner. And they retail for about $40 worth of items, right? Normally, I can get that price down to 30, 25 bucks, right? Right now, I'm getting it to, to maybe $36 if I'm lucky. And it's just because you can't buy in bulk. The Mountaineer Food Bank is really limited what's, what you're able to buy, especially dry goods. So frozen stuff, we can, we can get as much as we want, right? But then you have to have someplace to store that, so it becomes another problem for people. But the dry stuff is, is really slowing down, and that's why we're having to look at some different places to buy food. Also with this part that Ron's talking about, we're looking at ordering like kind of bulk stuff through like Cisco, too. The only problem with that is it's going to come in like the, the number 10 containers, so it's those big kind of tubs of stuff, right? So you get a big tub of peanut butter, but how do you send that out in 400 boxes, you know? So those problems are stuff that we're working with, but that's kind of why it's, it's a lot harder, I think, to get like a thousand box worth of dry goods, plus that, that produce, plus those staples, kind of get it all together this quickly. And also why it's going to be a lot more expensive than it normally is.
Okay, so my question for, one second, Rourke, so for, for Ron, what entity would we be providing the funding, funding to this 4,100 that you're talking about, Ron?
I had to get you off, I had to get you off mute. We, that would be either through the, either to the school system or directly to the State Department of Agriculture.
Okay.
And that would be, I'm working directly with Kent Leonhardt. He's, he called me a couple of times over the last couple of days, and we've talked back and forth. And he wants, he wants to see, because we, we canceled our, our April order, obviously, because we don't have 12,000 kids to feed at schools. And it really put a, they, they have a lot of food down there sitting, and they're trying to figure out how to get it out.
Okay.
So the two, the two entities, one, if we have to go through, they, because Kent told me specifically, put the, put the order in through the school, have them submit the order, and we'll make this happen. So if that happens, we just have to go reimburse the schools, the lunch programs of the schools. But if it went to the, if the State Department of Agriculture were willing to bill separately, it depends on who it goes to. If the food goes to, if we can get this figured out and work it through Pantry Plus More, then, then what happens is Pantry Plus More would have to submit, you have to give that money to Pantry Plus More to submit it that way. The other, I mean, the other option is the, the chief of staff for the, for Kent, for Secretary Leonhardt, he told me that the, that you can call and set up a, at this point, the USDA's loosened their rules as far as setting up a food pantry. So like, you know, Mon, feeding Mon kids could become a food pantry for a time being here while we're doing this, if we, if Pantry Plus More and, and, I mean, they work directly with Justin, so I don't see where that would be an issue.
Yeah.
But if there's an issue with, with them not wanting to ramp up, or if there's some, something, then that's, then that's a direct question that we can ask.
We're just looking, we're just looking here for separation on the motions and where the, you know, where the funding's going, so.
Okay.
All right, well, that, it would be either, that, I'd have to say either the West Virginia Department of Agriculture or the, the schools' food system.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
So the, I remove that we approve the request of 4,100, whether it's payable to the school or to the Department of Agriculture?
Second.
Well, would you like to amend?
Yeah, I'd like to amend it to 5,000, since, why don't we just do 5,000 in case there's a cost?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, 5,000.
Been properly moved and seconded with amended to $5,000 for this grant, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Ron, you can stay on the line if you want. Rourke, you are now speaking for the Pantry Plus.
Okay.
As I spoke before.
Put my different hat on.
I understand, as I spoke before, Commissioner Bloom will recuse himself from this particular vote, okay?
Okay. So like I said, we're doing a delivery program on Mondays and Thursdays. Mondays are essentially our day that we're working directly with the school system. So we're working through the outreach coordinators at each school and the pre-K head start coordinators. And what they're doing is identifying people that don't have transportation, are meeting certain guidelines for, for being in extreme poverty, people that really need the help. And so then we're doing all their deliveries on Mondays with the help of the outreach coordinators. And so, and that's our Mondays. It's about 200 boxes that go out on Monday. And then on our Thursday is kind of our open signups for people that have kids in school. And we're doing another 200 on that day. So, so we're averaging somewhere in the ballpark of about 400. It's been increasing. I can give you the exact numbers. For week one, we did 289 boxes with a combined 2,601 meals in it. Week two, we were up to 354 boxes, equalling 3,186 meals. And we, we're in week three right now, but I know we've, we're creeping up past that 400 number. So it's pretty expensive. If you're taking a box at about like $40 per box, and, and, you know, it's, it's about $16,000 per week for us to do this program, which is, it's a lot of money. But we're trying to put things in it that are more staple items, right? So bread's going in every box, milk, cheese, some things that, that maybe you're not used to getting at a, at a pantry. So it's not only just dry goods, it's a mix of things. And we, we really think that the, the need is going to increase for this. So we, we already have a group from those outreach coordinators that are kind of what we're considering like a secondary group in that the, the need is there, but it's not as dire as our first group. So we're kind of expanding it to meet in like waves, if that makes sense. So, so I'm estimating that our number is probably going to get somewhere up to 500 in the next couple of weeks. But I, I'm not sure, and I, I have no real good way to estimate where we're going to be at in the next couple of weeks. The other thing is a huge thing, since we're doing deliveries, and I think we've already talked a little bit about this with you, with the commission, is, is boxes is something that we're going through so quickly. And we've thought about recycling them, taking them back from folks, but we just worry about that being a big exposure problem, and where would we keep that number of boxes all made already? You know, for that 72, you know, hours. You know, we're pretty packed in our storage place already with, with more food and, and extra things, so. I mean, it just was a real impossibility for us. It'd be a second set of delivery pickups, too, which I think would tax our volunteers who are already giving their time in a pretty tough time. So that's something that, that is pretty expensive. It's like $2,700 to buy that, that big portion of boxes we were talking about. So I guess that's, that's pretty much all I have unless there are any questions.
Well, I'm just trying to drill down to the specific ask of the commission.
Yeah, yeah, so what I was thinking was the, the, was $8,000, right? So $5,000 would do 125 meals at that $40 cost, right? If I could get it down, say, to like 30 bucks, it'd cover about 166 meals. So I can't be totally sure with where we're going to fall in that, but that's what we're talking. And then the other portion would cover boxes. So the, the last 3,000 would cover buying boxes.
Okay. I'd like to approve, to motion that, make a motion that we approve not to exceed $10,000, which will be reimbursed, is that the way we, which would be reimbursed for efforts by the, by the Pantry Plus More during this COVID-19 crisis.
Okay, I'll second the motion. It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rourke. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rourke. I know you have to go back and make boxes.
Next, we have consideration to purchase a uniform cloud-based reservation system for the Montague County parks. We have three county parks, and this has been demonstrated to us. I think it would be a good thing for the public to be able to find this, this service online, so.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, to consider for adoption a declared declaration of state of emergency and existence of catastrophic health emergency, COVID-19.
Move to approve?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, when we're on that subject, would you mind if we suspend the rules and ask Jimmy Smith to come up and give us an update?
Yes.
Coming up on reports from elected officials, anyway, so.
Oh, okay.
It would be perfect timing.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Right now, as of this morning, we stood at 31 cases in Mon County officially. I do believe that number will go up today. Small amount, but we will see an increase in that number today. But one thing that we need to keep in mind, we are at the beginning. They are not projecting West Virginia to hit our peak for another month, till about May 1st. So we need to keep that in mind, that we are at the beginning. They're calling for the national peak to be about the middle of this month, and for West Virginia to peak about May 1st. So we need to continue the efforts that we've been putting forth for the last two weeks. I think since West Virginia did have the advantage of seeing what was going on throughout the country, that we have started early. They're, they believe that that will help us in, in trying to keep our numbers down. But I can't emphasize enough that we need to continue on the path we're going. We need to practice our social distancing, staying home when you have to stay, when you can't stay home, washing your hands, all the CDC guidelines, we need to continue that. We're seeing terrible things going on in New York. We don't want to see those in West Virginia. Right now, we, they believe that our hospital capacity in West Virginia, if we continue moving in the direction we're moving, can handle this outbreak. It will be stretched, but it should be able to handle it. But, you know, we have to emphasize to the public to continue on the path we're going. I know these last two weeks have been long, and next month's going to be even longer. But I think if we stay the course, I think we're going to see, see the benefits from it. I have to point out Doc Smith in the Health Department, the job that, that he has done and his staff. I think we in Mon County are, are one of the most fortunate counties, not only in the state, but in the country, to have a gentleman like this leading us in this endeavor. He has been nonstop from, you know, I, I bother him real early in the morning sometimes to real late at night. And, and, you know, he, he's always professional, he's always moving forward with it. So I just really wanted to point out the, the exceptional job that he and his staff have been doing at the Mon County Health Department. We have create, created the Mon Emergency Management, Mon Health Department Unified Command. The commission should have received an invite to join that command. We will be meeting twice a week through the Hissen virtual accounts. We felt we're hitting the point now where we need to break off from the JIC and go to the unified command structure, because it's going to get worse before it gets better. And we need to continue to prepare and, and continue to take the steps that we are taking. Not that I want to paint a gloomy picture, but I want to paint a real picture that we need to take this serious as a community, we need to, to keep following those CDC guidelines, because by doing so, it is proven that it reduces the effects of this. And so I just want to stress, and I know we had the media here today, but I want to stress the continuance following of those CDC guidelines so that the least amount of people to be harmed by this can occur in our community. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Reports from elected officials. Gary, do you have anything to report?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Happy birthday, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I participated in a conference call right before commission meeting today with the Secretary of State's office. The governor is going to be holding a briefing at 11 o'clock today and is expected to discuss or make a decision about the election. He has received additional information from Dr. Clay Marsh about the peak of the COVID-19 crisis in West Virginia, and the fact that it is peaking during our early voting period and right before our May 12th election. So we are anticipating learning what the governor is going to say. To that end, we have made arrangements to have applications for absentee ballots to be mailed to every eligible voter in Montague County. And those were expected to be mailed on April 6th. And they may can still be mailed on April 6th because the vendors have already printed them. The governor's supposed to make his announcement today, so if, you know, that may be delayed, depending on what the governor says. But every voter will still have an opportunity to vote by absentee ballot if they wish to. Absentee ballot applications will be mailed to every eligible voter. They can return those by email, by fax, or by postal mail. They can return those by email, by fax, or by postal mail. Once we receive that application, then we will mail a ballot. I think there is some confusion among the voters, because they hear so many different things, that they are expecting just to receive a ballot in the mail. And that is not what is occurring. The governor may postpone in-person voting, but we will still have absentee, an absentee option for the voting public. So I just want to make that clarification, because we have already received applications for 500 and roughly 550 ballots. We're expecting that, of course, to be increase in numbers as we get closer to whatever day they finally decide that we're going to hold our election. But I encourage all of our voters not to worry about the election part. They need to concentrate on following the CDC guidelines, listening to what Jimmy Smith and Dr. Smith with the Health Department are recommending. We will make sure that all of the voters in this county will have an opportunity to cast their ballot, either by absentee, if that's their wish, or in-person at whatever date the governor decides. And we will make sure that we take care of all those steps, and that every voter will have their opportunity. We will also have ads in the newspaper. I have not started running those yet, because this has been changing daily, and I don't want to add to any more confusion. So I'm sort of trying to wait until they make a decision at the governor's level. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that...
I have two questions. One that, if you could answer, there's concern that people have to put a stamp on a ballot if it's back. Could you explain that process?
Yes. This, the absentee by mail process is a two-step process. There is an application required. The application, if you return it to us by mail, they do have to pay their own postage to return the application. They can, they can get an application by going to the website for the Montague County Clerk or for the West Virginia Secretary of State, download that, return that to us by email, and that doesn't cost anything, or fax it. But if they choose to return it by mail, they will have to use their own postage to return their application.
Application.
Once they, we receive their application and we mail a ballot, then the postage is covered on the ballot coming back. So every ballot that is mailed out has a return envelope to be completed by the voter, and that return envelope does have postage on it.
Okay. The second is a process question that someone, people are getting confused. When you get all, let's say you get 5,000 absentee ballots, which is probably very low, when are those counted? Before, or, you know, at the end, how are they, are they counted for when the first numbers come out, or are they counted in the awards?
That night or during canvassing?
Yeah, that's, yeah. Are they during canvassing or that night? And that's a question, because we've never had such an enormous amount, that's...
Well, we have never had such an enormous amount, but we will handle them in the same fashion that we have handled all of our other absentee ballots. That process isn't changing. The only thing, it may delay us a little bit, because we have so many.
Right.
Well, we will do everything in our power to make sure that we still follow the same structure, and that has been that we release our absentees as a separate group. If you remember from elections past, we would release our absentee in our early voting at the beginning, while we waited on our precincts to come in.
Okay. That was the big question, they didn't know when, okay.
Right. We, you know, that is a, that is a question that the Secretary of State's office may change as part of their rules of looking at what we're going to do, where instead of handling them as absentees per se, we release them as part of our election day precincts.
Okay.
But that, we will do one or the other, but we will do everything in our power to make sure that they are included in the unofficial count that comes in on election night.
Okay.
Whenever election night may be.
Because that was the confusion people were having.
Now, the one caveat, with an increase in absentee ballots, you're going to have an increase in provisionals.
Absolutely not, we should not have.
Well, if you have more absentee ballots, won't you have more ballots that are questioned?
Questioned.
And those are the ones that I'm talking, maybe I'm using the wrong word.
Yeah, we should not have. A provisional ballot has nothing to do with an absentee, and I want to make sure, I don't want the voters to be fearful of returning an absentee ballot by mail, because they are fearful that it's not going to be counted. We process, the reason why there is an application process is because before we ever mail a ballot out to the voter...
You will verify, okay.
Our office has verified that they are a duly qualified voter and entitled to receive that ballot. This is not a vote-by-mail process, where we're just blanketly mailing ballots to voters. This is an applied application, so they are putting, they are requesting a ballot from us. We verify they're registered, we verify what political party they are, because this is a primary. So there are 123 different ballots styles for Montague County. Three, a Democratic, a Republican, and a nonpartisan ballot for 41 different precincts. And so it's a very manual labor process on the administrative end, to make sure that every voter that applies for an absentee ballot receives their correct absentee ballot. And, but there should not be an increase in provisional ballots.
Okay. And that clarifies a lot for me, too. Thank you.
Yes, yes, and they should be counted on election night, not at canvassing.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that update.
We appreciate it, and for all the hard work that we know you're going through now, and that you will be... So, reports from county commissioners. Sean?
Since last meeting, obviously, our meetings have been down, or have been virtual. Last Friday, we had staff meetings, and then in the afternoon, we had our, at that time, it was the Joint Information, Joint Information Command call. This week, on Monday, we had our Montague County Operations Call, as we do twice a week. On Tuesday, we had our Unified Central Command Call. This morning, we had a call with Green County Commission, as we continue to have a call with them on every Wednesday, just to update on what's happening across our borders. Today's a regular day, and we also have our county operations call this afternoon, which was moved due to the governor's address at 11 o'clock. Still a light schedule this week. Friday, we have staff reports and Unified Command Call in the afternoon, Unified Central Command Call in the afternoon. I do, like everybody else, want to thank Jimmy Smith and Dr. Smith for all their efforts. I, just like Jimmy, I regularly share texts with Dr. Smith, and he's very responsive. It's weekends, nights, mornings, doesn't matter. And I think the Health Department's doing a good job of dealing with this crisis. This is why it's so important that we have a vital and fully functioning Health Department, and there, a lot of people are now understanding that. The last thing is, I want to thank the groups that put in the requests for their food insecurity efforts. This is important, as this, as everybody's dealing with this COVID-19 crisis, how it affects those that are the most vulnerable, and I appreciate the efforts of all these groups. And Carrie, thank you. I know you're going to have a lot on your plate in the next month. I, for one, hope that we can postpone the election, but that's at the state level, so we'll see what comes forward. But I know that you're going to have a lot on your plate, and you'll handle it just like every other election year. Thank you.
First, I was going to ask for a motion to recommend that we could postpone it and send it to the governor's office, but since he's having the conference, and I appreciate that, that solves my question of doing that. I do want to pass on a little bit of sadness. Kim Randolph, who was the mayor of the city of Morgantown for years, was an exceptional elected official, and he was the mayor the entire time I was there on city council, and my thoughts and prayers go out to him. It's very rare to find elected officials like him now, and I just wanted his family to know that we appreciate what he did for this community. As Commissioner Secora said, and Carrie Blaney from the County Clerk's office said, the new graph looks like May 1st. That is what they're predicting as the peak. Now, when people look at that, they say, oh, it's over May 1st. No, that's when it peaks and then comes down, so I just, that is four weeks away. And people need to understand, and we've just gone through one week, and I appreciate the community, and it's going to get a little dicey as things get closer, but we need to continue to not be complacent, as the words are, and move forward. On the homeless committee side, we have made some recommendations. We have submitted them to the city of Morgantown without going public at this time. We are just making sure, we want to see where they are at, and are they willing to work with us and come up with mutual solutions, and we're waiting to hear back from them. And finally, I do want to say, A, thank to all the workers who are working right now. I think it's kind of ironic that the backbone of running this county and the state are not the ones with the four-year degrees. And I think that's real important to know. They're the individuals who are working, also handing out, working at the stores, working at the food places, making sure that they continually help our community work with the other individuals, and I wanted to do a shout-out to them. And a final shout-out to my county commissioners, that was a nice surprise, and they have always been very supportive of me and the food programs in this county. And I think it just shows that when they run the county, it isn't just numbers and dollars and figures, but it's actually lives and caring for the individuals and the students and families who were food insufficient, and I'm very honored and appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for remembering Mr. Randolph. I actually knew him from another perspective, in that my father and I did some work on his house. I actually think we built it. I'd also like to thank both my commissioners for allowing us to discuss. I know I brought it up last week during my report, so that we would bypass going a work session to discuss these food insecurity issues, and we're able to get everybody on board, so thank you both for that consideration. And again, everybody out there that's doing the work on the front line, particularly our Health Department. People don't really understand how remarkable we have it here in Montague County. I know compared to some other counties where there's a little bit of distress going on at this time. We are well-served by the people that are, you know, in the county employ. So be safe out there. I wish everybody the best, and really, we do hope for the best, but prepare and care as if you were expecting the worst, please. Don't take anything for granted, and avoid anything that you don't have to do. Stay inside, please. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn, second.
Been properly moved and seconded, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.